No.
America has over eleven thousand active members in Los Angeles County and your message to them is that casinos and gambling are more important than the people. So what's the rush? Why is this exempt from CEQA? Where is the community outreach and engagement on your part? Or is it like it appears to be? You just don't care as long as the casinos get what they want. Please do what's right by your voters and stop these unnecessary sign expansions today.
It's on the agenda, I guess. It's on the agenda.
Okay, you know, I gotta tell you that anyone that's here to talk about the... Hold on once. Yeah, anyone's here to talk about the signs, that's not gonna be on today's agenda. The only reason for that agenda item is to set a public hearing. So if you're here to talk about signs, you're gonna be better to come back on August 12th at 2:00 PM. Or you could speak at the end of the meeting for one minute. So have a seat and at the end of the meeting, it'll be open and you can talk about it.
Yeah.
Okay?
And please put your signs down so you don't block people's view.
But they are beautiful. They're beautiful signs. Thank you very much. All right, so now with that, we're gonna move on to the agenda. And we're gonna go with M... Oh, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. Item one, CSA one and H one.
Warrant register.
Receive and file. Madam Clerk, what's the next scheduled item?
Yes, Mayor, the next scheduled item is a public hearing to consider adoption of a resolution making findings and overruling protests and objections and ordering delinquent sewer fees and refuse charges to be placed on the tax rolls for fiscal year 2024 through 2025.
Move one and two.
Second.
Before we do that, can we have like a little brief discussion from... Okay, so has notice form... Has notice of hearing been given in the time form of matters required by law? And do you have an affidavit on file?
Yes, Mayor, notification has been given and affidavit is on file.
Have any communication been received on the matter?
No, Mayor, no communications have been received.
Ms. Haney, is there a staff report on the matter?
Yes, sir, there is.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm here to present a public hearing to place outstanding delinquent refuse and sewer charges on the property tax bill for collection. The majority of Inglewood residents and businesses receive water, refuse and sewers from the city. Approximately a quarter of the city receives refuse and sewer services only and water is provided by an outside agency. For this section of the city, there is no mechanism to enforce collection of refuse and sewer fees. The County of Los Angeles mandates that refuse and sewers be provided by all residents and businesses for health and safety reasons. Since the collection of refuse and providing of sewer services is mandatory, the County of Los Angeles allows the city to hold the property owner liable and place these fees directly onto the property tax bill after they've been properly noticed and a public hearing has been set. As of May 31st, there were three hundred and twenty-three delinquent refuse and sewer accounts with charges in excess of $250 and more than ninety days past due. The total outstanding amount of these accounts represent $268,000 of uncollected revenue. Each year, the city reviews delinquent refuse and sewer accounts and submits them to the County of Los Angeles for placement on property tax rolls for collection. Full collection of these outstanding charges prevents utility customers who are in good outstanding...
That wasn't me. Promise. Continue on.
They have good standing and have subsidized the service of delivery cost of others. The proposed 2025 year lien list consists of residential single family, multi-unit apartment buildings and commercial properties. The customer service division of the Finance Department has provided copies to the tenants' delinquency bill notices to the affected property owners as well as hearing notice in English and Spanish. As in the past, the Finance Department will work directly with the property owners to solve issues concerning their delinquent accounts through the hearing date and will work with customers to resolve their delinquent balances even after they've been submitted to the County of LA. As of today, the Finance Department has worked with over sixty-six property owners and have removed them from the lien list, and we look forward to working with any additional property owner that would like to resolve this issue directly. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any comment from the public on this matter? Okay, so with that, is there a motion, move one and two?
Yes, Mayor, my motion is already on the floor.
And it was second. So then call the roll.
Yes, Mayor, Councilmembers Padilla.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye. Matt, let's see, just one second.
Okay.
Okay, M one?
Yes, sir. Approval of the minutes of the meetings held on June 3rd, 2025 and June 10th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Councilmembers Padilla.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye, consent calendar items two through seven.
So moved.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Councilmembers Padilla.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye, SPH one.
Staff report requesting the mayor and council members set a public hearing to consider special use permit number 25-00010, allowing the modifications of an existing special venue freeway sign on a C three zone property at 8801 South La Cianica Boulevard.
Set the public hearing for August 12th, 2025 at 2:00 PM, SPH two.
Yes, Mayor, staff report requesting the mayor and council members set a public hearing to consider special use permit number 25-00013, allowing the modifications of an existing special venue freeway sign on a C dash two A zone property at 11305 Prairie Avenue.
Set the public hearing for August 12th, 2025 at 2:00 PM, SPH three.
Yes, staff report requesting the mayor and council members set a public hearing to receive input on the triennial report on water quality relative to public health goals.
Set that hearing for August 26th, 2025 at 2:00 PM, A one.
Good afternoon, Mayor. We had one item on closed session, however, closed session was canceled due to a lack of quorum. And A two, no oral reports.
Very good. CM one?
No oral reports, sir.
CC one?
Yes, Mayor, my son Quentin, his father lost his mother last week. She was a Inglewood, not teacher, but she worked in the administration part of Latihara School. And so Quentin has lost his grandmother, his dad lost his mom, so just asking that we close the meeting in the name of Trishelle Thompson, a long-term, you know, supporter and worker of Inglewood Unified School District. On a better note, happy anniversary again to Ms. Cheryl Shaw and her husband, Williams. We had a great time on Saturday, Councilwoman Falk, and our city treasury went and celebrated them, and so that was really, really nice. And then lastly, in my office, happy birthday to Camille. Thank you, Mayor. That concludes my remarks.
It was Cheryl's birthday when?
No, her anniversary.
Oh, was her anniversary?
Yes, she and her husband.
Okay.
Yes.
And so let's go on to CT one.
That's the monthly treasury report for the month ending June 30th, 2025.
Receive and file. Successor agencies in session, CSA two.
Approval of the minutes of the meetings held on June 3rd, 2025 and June 10th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Successor agency members Padilla.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Chairman Butts.
Aye, CSA three.
Monthly treasury report for the month ending June 30th, 2025.
Receive and file. Adjourned to successor agency, the housing authorities in session, H two.
Approval of the minutes of the meetings held on June 3rd, 2025 and June 10th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Housing authority members Padilla.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Chairman Butts.
Aye. Excuse me, and now H three.
Yes, Mayor, monthly treasury report for the month ending June 30th, 2025.
Receive and file. Adjourn the housing authority, the finance authorities in session, F one.
Approval of the minutes of the meeting held on June 3rd, 2025.
So moved. Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Finance authority members Padilla.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Chairman Butts.
Aye, adjourn the finance authority. Parking authorities in session, P one.
Approval of the minutes of the meetings held on June 3rd, 2025 and June 10th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Parking authority members Padilla.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Chairman Butts.
Aye, adjourn the parking authority, the JPA is in session, JPA one.
Approval of the minutes of the meetings held on June 3rd, 2025 and June 10th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Joint powers authority members Padilla.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Chairman Butts.
Aye, JPA two.
Monthly treasury report for the month ending June 30th, 2025.
Receive and file. The JPA is now closed. No appointments to boards, commissions, committees. Now, public comment, any persons wishing to address the council on any matter connected to city business, not elsewhere considered. Since the setting of the hearings was on the agenda, anyone that wants to talk about those two items will have three minutes.
In support of the work that Scenic America is doing, you know, and what the community, the sentiment that the community has expressed, as you can see, many people are here from the community because, you know, we're tired of the proliferation of billboards in this community. You know, when is enough enough? There's tons of billboards already in the community. We have huge WOW building, billboards, we have the casino billboards, we have the other one here by, you know, what is it, the Market Street sign? And it's just, you know, it's getting to be too much, and what is the city gaining out of it? So, you know, we're here today, we'll be here at the public hearing, and we'll be here as many times as we need to be here to express our concerns about, you know, it's blight, it's blight for the community, and it doesn't do us any good. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Mike Montgomery, representing WOW, Inglewood's dedicated partner since 2015. WOW has contributed nearly $27 million to the city's general fund, helping sustain vital services like police, fire, infrastructure improvements, youth programs and public parks. Today, we respectfully urge the council to reject the proposed special use permits that would allow Hollywood Park Casino to convert its signs into oversized off-site digital billboards. These signs offer no financial benefit to Inglewood, no rent, no revenue and no public good. Instead, they threaten the city's existing signage program designed to generate public funding through carefully regulated digital displays. Approving these permits would jeopardize a proven source of revenue and potentially violate Inglewood's longstanding agreement with WOW. We've honored that agreement in good faith and ask that the city do the same. This is more, this is about more than signs, this is about preserving Inglewood's public funding. The council has full discretion here. You have the right and the responsibility to say no. WOW values its partnership with Inglewood and asks that you protect it by rejecting these permits. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, my name is Gabriel Garcia. Mayor and councilmembers, my name is Gabriel Garcia. I worry about these Hollywood Park Casino signs and the messages you are sending to the community. Is willing to overlook a process that is in place to protect people so that your billionaire benefactors can do whatever they want? We don't want these bright Vegas-style billboards in our city. Enough is enough. We elected you to represent us, not Korenke and his billionaire agenda. Stop these signs today. Thank you.
Hello, council and mayor. I'm Vincent Casey. I have lived in Inglewood most of my life, and I'm not happy with what it is transforming into. The entire area around the stadium feels like Las Vegas, and now these signs will only add to that impact. Pushing this through with an exemption doesn't seem transparent or for the best benefit for the community. Why are you cutting corners for billionaires? At whatever cost, stop selling out our cities to these billionaires.
Excuse me, sir. Sir, which billionaires are you talking about? Which billionaires are you talking about? You said... Okay, all right. Thank you. I don't know of any billionaires that are behind Hollywood Park Casino, but go ahead.
My name, Maria Gonzalez. I'm here on behalf of the Hispanic community. I'm opposing about billboards because I'm aware of the damage that it can create to the community, so please, I ask each one of you to please consider the health of the community, that it doesn't benefit anybody. Well, we're talking about money, so please consider the health of the community and I'm opposing about more billboards. Thank you.
Buenas tardes, miembros del Consilio. Me dirijo ustedes con todo respeto, siendo la portavoz de miles de personas a las cuales hemos visitado. Hemos escuchado su malestar por los diferentes signs que han puesto ahí en los free words, como en diferentes puntos estratégicos, en donde la gente pues evidentemente no se ha identificada con los valores, la ética de nuestra comunidad, al ver los diversos anuncios publicitarios que no nos traen nada positivo para nosotros. Ustedes que tienen la decisión les pedimos que por favor reinteren la voz de la ciudadanía, los escuchen, los escuchen a la juventud, a todos los que estamos aquí presentes, para defender los intereses de los ciudadanos y no del sector privado. Además que voy a retomar un testimonio de una persona. Un segundo puede cambiar una vida. Un segundo de distracción puede generar una muerte. Esto es una invasión visual daña a nuestra salud, y por eso es que pedimos que ustedes tomen la decisión de no extender más signs, de no poner más pantallas con este tipo de publicaciones que se frenen. Es momento de que nos apoyen, nos respalden como nosotros lo hicimos en su momento, con cada uno de ustedes que hoy pueden ayudarnos a que esto se frene. Muchos vecinos con los cuales hemos platicado de alguna manera están inconformes porque en la noche no pueden dormir derribado a la luz que ponen estos signs iluminados 24 horas por todo el año. Es cuánto gracias.
Gracias.
I will wait until Mayor comes back because as we pay attention when you guys are speaking, I deserve the same.
If you'd like, you can go ahead and step out and the next person can step up to the mic.
Thank you.
Uh huh.
Any others?
Yeah.
Yes, good afternoon. My name is Carl Landron, and I was here on the 17th of June, but I got here a little late, about 2:20, and the meeting was over. So I gave Ms. Thompson eight letters for each council member, and she said someone would be getting in touch with me, but I wasn't familiar with the procedure. So I was here today to find out what is it that I should do? Just wait until I hear from the council or should I come to every meeting? You know, what do I do? What do I do?
Just what is your issue, sir?
It was in regards to unfair gambling practices at the Hollywood Park Casino.
Okay, then what you could do is, you say unfair or illegal?
Unfair.
Okay, so now gambling is regulated by the state?
Yes.
And so your complaint would be with the state. The city of Inglewood does not regulate gambling, so...
H R B regulates, the California Horse Racing.
Yes.
They regulate, correct.
And that's my recommendation that you contact them.
I've done that, sir, but I've got no response. So I'm thinking seriously that my complaint was not sent over to the governor so he could review the complaint, so...
Okay.
I was thinking maybe if I came down here, I would get some support. Seeing as you're the mayor of the city, you would be concerned with people getting a fair gamble in your city.
I'm very concerned that people get fairness when they gamble, but I would have to tell you this, that what I recommend that you do is write out what your issue is, email it to the city clerk's office, and they'll forward it to my office and I'll see what, if anything, we can do.
Sir, I did that already. I left eight letters in detail, detailed information as to what my complaint was all about.
Well, I guess I didn't see it.
We'll discuss it, Mayor, after.
We'll discuss it after. Apparently she has them, and I'll look at them and I'll see what, if anything, we can do.
I heard you, but I didn't see it.
But at any rate, someone will contact you and tell you what, if anything, can be done.
Well, when?
No, sir, don't, no, don't, no. It's, like, don't put a time on me.
No, no, I'm just asking, would there be an approximate timeline on that?
I have no approximate timeline because I don't know the depth of what you're asking for, but I will tell you this.
Did you?
Sir, 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 I will look at it.
Okay.
And I will get back with you.
So I'll just wait until I hear from you.
And you will hear from me sooner than you want to, all right?
What?
You'll hear from me sooner than you expect.
Thank you very much, sir.
All right.
My name is Luis Luján. We have been organizing our neighborhood around this issue for the past week in regards of the billboards. We have gathered over a thousand signatures from residents in District Three and Four alone who are against the signs. We are getting requests for lawn signs every day. The community cannot be more clear about this issue. Keep these signs out of our city? In fact, we want the existing signs to come all the way down. There is zero benefit to the community and they only lower the quality of life. Advertising, light pollution, eyeshores. We want you to vote today to stop this proposal dead in its tracks and show the people that you represent them and not the big corporations. I want to state that I am going to be turning in 1,384 signatures from the community that we've been knocking door to door, and they disagree with all these billboards.
So let me understand this. You're asking that we take down the existing billboards as well? Is that what you're asking?
Yes, all the signs.
Okay. Thank you. Hello.
Council. My name is Michael Choverin. I do live off of Ashen Hill Crest, directly across from that Hollywood Park sign that they want to make 10 feet taller as well as make a big screen. I mean, I don't know if they know, but they are building, yes, where there are warehouses and a Home Depot, but right across from it, there's a neighborhood, my neighborhood, a park for kids. I don't understand Inglewood's fascination with all these screens. There's been nine screens added within the last three years or something, the WOW Media Screens, all across Inglewood with probably a promise of more. You're not making this town better. Like, you have all these SoFi stadiums, you want to say, we're the best because we have all these stadiums? I don't feel like the city is getting any better. It's Market Street still needs a lot of work. I mean, invest in Century, invest in Manchester, invest in making the city more aesthetically pleasing, not these screens everywhere. I don't understand what these... What is... We're different because we have all these stadiums? Not these screens everywhere, I don't understand what these, what is, we're different because we have screens? I don't understand. And it just needs to stop, and I don't want this Hollywood Park sign, because it's just going to be bright for all the residents to see. There's about six of those screens across Los Angeles alone, within a mile of each other. It's, it's excessive.
Could I ask you a question? You, you know they already have a, a billboard up, you know that, right?
What are you talking about? I know, but it's not a screen.
I'm just.
I understand, I, I've lived here my whole life. Yeah, I don't, yeah, if you don't know, then I, I'm telling you.
Sir, I'm just asking a question, so.
No.
Sir, sir, please, you're going to have to leave, don't, don't do that. Here, here's what we want to do, we want to understand exactly what people want and what they're saying. So do not interrupt again, sir, go right ahead.
Okay, so you know it is not a screen. It's, has a little thing that's not a screen, it's kind of just like, I don't know what you call it, but right under it, it's just a big sign that doesn't move, it's not, it's still, it's not a screen. But they want to make it a screen, and they want to make it 10 feet taller. Okay, and I'm just saying, it's just, we're not being creative with all these screens. It's excessive, it's, really invest in the city itself, the streets, Market Street. I mean, you want people just to come for SoFi and into a dome, but no one's coming to the, the stores, no one's coming to the restaurants, because it doesn't look very good. Prairie looks awful. I mean, really, use this money for better reasons, not screens. Not, and, and, and whatever you're getting from these screens, use it towards that too. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, I am Kiara Jo, I'm from Assemblyman McKenna's office, and I am here to invite all of you to our backpack giveaway, it's on August 16th at 10 a.m. in the Imperial Crenshaw Shopping Center. Hope you all can make it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, I was up here earlier, but only had a minute, so hoping I can get the.
You go right ahead, you'll have your two minutes, sir.
Good afternoon, Mister Mayor and Councilmembers. Uh, I'm Dustin Batten, I'm here representing Scenic America in scenic Los Angeles. Our mission is to prevent the proliferation of billboards and blight in our communities. And this proposal from Hollywood Park Casino does exactly that, spreads blight and offers zero benefit to the city and the people in it. Additionally, exempting this from CEQA also signals where your priorities are, and they are not with the people of Inglewood. Scenic America has over 11,000 active members in Los Angeles County, and your message to them is that casinos and gambling are more important than the people and the health of this community. So, what's the rush? Why is this exempt from CEQA? Where is the community outreach and engagement on your part? Or is it like it appears to be? You just don't care as long as the casinos get what they want. Please do what's right by your voters and stop these unnecessary sign expansions. And I find it very disheartening that when a group of people from the community show up today, the first thing the mayor says to them is, you're wasting your time. Why are you here? Show up in a few weeks.
I, I, I don't think I, I don't think I heard that, sir. We're gonna have.
Can I reclaim my time?
Sir, sir, no, no, you can't reclaim time, but you can't misrepresent. I said there's going to be a public hearing, that they'll, that, that they'll be allowed to speak at again. So I didn't say they're wasting their time. So go right ahead, sir.
Can I reclaim my time?
Sir, continue on.
Can I reclaim my time?
No, you can't, continue on, sir.
Are you going to stifle my?
Continue on, sir.
First Amendment.
Sir, continue on.
A democracy. This is my right, you keep taking up my time so that.
About 25 seconds?
44 seconds, back on the clock.
Continue on, sir.
This is pathetic.
You can continue on, sir, you said you wanted 40 seconds, continue on.
Clock's at nine.
It, you, you don't have to pay attention to the clock, I said continue on. I said, I, I will tell you when there's 44 seconds done, go ahead, sir.
Now we gotta trust this, okay. Everyone heard it when you walked in, said, you don't have to be here today, right? That's the point we're trying to make. They don't care about you, they care about gambling and casinos and money. So we'll be here on the 12th, we'll be here every single time that we need to be here. We're not going away, we're only going to increase in size and volume. Thank you.
There you go. Okay, is, are there any other speakers? If not, we'll close public comment, and we'll go to council remarks, Councilman Padilla.
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I want to thank you guys for coming out, really appreciate, I, I, I enjoy seeing our young men and women come out, uh, and to be concerned about any issue that they have in the community. And, and that's what this forum is for, is to come out to express your thoughts and, and what you believe in, uh, and that's important. But in no way, shape, or form did the mayor ever say, you're wasting your time. And we all sat up here. What we did say was that, because it was a, being set for public hearing, we're not having that hearing today. But he did explain to you that, at the end, you'll get your one minute to talk about this item. Right? So he informed you, and that's what we do. And when somebody comes up here and tries to put words in people's mouth, that's not right either. Because all you're doing is, you're trying to spread hate, you're trying to spread, you know, negative stuff. And so now let's talk about billboards, right? So we're going to have a hearing on this, on August 12th at 2 p.m. You know, and we'll have more discussions at that point. That'll be another opportunity, right? But when somebody also gets up there and says, you know, this city hasn't done anything, I, I think like, especially if they live here, what rock have you been under? The city hasn't done anything? Look around you. Look at this city, it's a premier city. It is a city of champions, yeah, people can do all they want to come up here and say their thoughts. I mean, that's what, what freedom of speech is all about. You can do that. But you have to be real. Be realistic about the city of Inglewood, the community in which you live in. Lot of things now that are happening in your community that makes Inglewood stronger and puts Inglewood at the forefront. We, as your elected officials, we, as the folks up here on the dais, our interests are not self-interest. We've always said our interest is about what's best for Inglewood. And when we do that, and when you do the right thing right, you're going to be a success. And so I encourage you, young men and women, and everybody that's here, to continue to have a voice. And let, let that voice be heard. But be real about it. Don't be misled. Don't be thinking, well, you know, nothing's been done to Century Boulevard, we redid Century Boulevard.
Thirty-three million dollars.
We, thirty-three million dollars, we're redoing Crenshaw Boulevard, right? We redid Setinella, all the way from Los Angeles to Florence. We redid La Brea. So when folks talk about improving the city, we've improved it. And so, uh, you know, again, thank you, and Mayor, appreciate your time.
Right, Councilwoman Falk.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm just going to piggyback on what Councilman Padilla said. Um, I disagree as well, the mayor did not say that. He was very clear, and, um, we do not like when people come in here and lie on our people on the dais here. So let's be very clear about what was said, and that was not what was said. Um, so, this is our house, don't come in here and lie on us and our house, okay? Not cool. Um, the other thing that I do want to say is that I also appreciate the advocacy. That's why we're here, we're elected officials, advocacy is very important. We appreciate you guys taking time out of your schedule to come here. This is an issue that you feel, uh, very important and passionate about, so we're glad to see you. Um, but like Councilman Padilla said, let's, let's be real, let's be real. Because, uh, the city of Inglewood, 10 years ago, was in a very different state than it is now. We've done a lot, and the income that the city receives from these billboards has definitely done a lot to improve the state of the city. We are improving, Crenshaw Boulevard is going to be a beautiful street. We've improved, like Councilman Padilla said, Century, we're going to improve Prairie. I think one, some, one of our residents mentioned Prairie and said that it does not look good. It will look good very soon. We're going to have the money to improve it. And we wouldn't have that if we did not work together as a team to make the right decisions in the best interest of the city of Inglewood all the time. That's what we do, that's what we do. So, we, um, we want you to know that we appreciate you, we want you to come back on August 12th. We want to hear everybody's point, we love to see our young kids come in and advocating for what they believe in, and we're hoping that there's even more people. But make sure that when you come in and advocate in our house, that you're, you're, you're advocating and you're bringing true reasoning. Don't come in here and lie to us in our house, because we know what we've done. Okay, we know what we're doing here, and the improvements we, we've made over the city, um, over time. So, um, but we appreciate you all so much, thank you so much for being here. And I did have something to say, but just, I wanted to just say that and address this issue, and I make sure I stand with, with my colleagues here. I stand with you, I stand with you, I do.
Ma'am, ma'am, ma'am.
But I stand with my colleagues up here, so, thank you. Well, you know what, Mayor, I do want to say something really quick, though. I do want to quickly, um, wish, uh, happy birthday to Zayn Hubbard, who, uh, we celebrated his birthday over the weekend. And, um, and also, that's, uh, Zayn Hubbard, that is Cheryl Shaw, Williams' nephew. And then also, um, I want to wish, uh, Cheryl Shaw Williams a very, very, very happy anniversary. Love her to death, she does a lot for this city. She is out there working hard, she's a planning commissioner, so we love her. So, thank you so much, Cheryl Shaw Williams, and, um, thank you so much for being there and working so hard for the city of Inglewood. And I stand with my, with my colleagues up here, all day, every day, all day, every day. Thank you, Mayor.
So, so really quick, you wanted to translate something, ma'am?
No, I wanted to ask if we can have a translator if you'd like.
I, I don't know that. Ma'am, 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 I'll talk to you about that later, I don't know how we're encompassed, it takes a lot of time, takes a lot of time. So, let, let me tell you my, my few comments. First of all, anyone that comes in here and says that things aren't better in the city, couldn't have lived here very long. The reality was, in, uh, February of 2011, within four months, we were going to be bankrupt. We were going to be in receivership. The receiver would have cut 50% of the employees here. This city was bad getting worse. Anyone that has lived here for any period of time knows that today, and you own your home, that you have generational wealth to pass on to your children, that did not exist before. And so, I really appreciate the support from my colleagues, but, um, what I won't do is let someone from Los Angeles come here and dictate to us and misrepresent what we're about. And let's talk about billboards. The first thing we did in 2012 was put out an RFP, for a partnership, with someone that would come in, build the boards on our, on our land. We would own the structures, and they would populate them for us, for a 50% split in revenues. Let me tell you, with no equivocation, had that not happened, we would not have made payroll in June. Our first guarantee was $200,000 minimum. And that was when the boards weren't making anything. And that was paid back as the revenues grew. So I want to make that clear, this is not some artistic bent by the council. This was desperation, and it was a Hail Mary, and it saved the city. And see, understand this, you live here, we live here, I live here, they live here. We want what's best for the city. We don't want us to be an eyesore. I personally don't think the billboards are an eyesore. I, I came from a time when people said, it looks like Las Vegas, they said it like that. And now they say, you know, it looks like Las Vegas here. So it's a matter of opinion, but let me tell you something, we heard every word that every one of you said. But what we don't want, and that's why I'll, I'll let you go over, but what I won't let people do is misre- misrepresent what we're doing, misrepresent what's been said. So, well, I'm going to tell you that we hear you, uh, we ponder what you say, and we look forward to seeing you when we have the hearings. This was a great warm-up. So thank you very much, everyone. And with that, we're going to close the meeting in the name of Trishelle Thompson, and we're adjourned.
Thank you, Mayor.